Mike, there we go, thanks. Good evening and welcome to the October 19th meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter over there along with request to speak cards. This is a reminder to everyone that request to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk, the clerk, prior to the completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on the card. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Vu.
Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start with item A, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission. The commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. I do not have any requests to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing then, we'll move to item B, correspondence and staff communications from the Planning Commission Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
We don't have any communications at this time.
Alright, thank you. So moving on to item C, disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners should disclose any communications they have had on the agenda at this time, and I will remind my commissioners that as you describe your ex parte communications, please be as specific as possible. And I'll start to my left with Commissioner Liebig.
Nope.
Commissioner Vu?
No.
Vice Chair Sturmphels?
Well, I received a letter from the applicant on item number four.
As did I.
As did I, sorry about that. Sorry, as part of our packet.
Right, so, yeah, so we've received a letter. I have not responded, I don't know if you've...
I have not.
It seems that none of us have responded. We have received communication from the applicant on number four. Seeing no additional items for under general, for under the general administrative function, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Item one, consideration and approval of the mitts from the October 5th commission meeting. Any discussion or motions?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Sturmphels.
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Liebig. Can we do roll call, roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Liebig?
Aye.
Commissioner Vu?
Aye.
Commissioner Sturmphels?
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item two on the regular agenda. This is a public hearing regarding proposed development agreements and conditional use permits for cannabis distribution, manufacturing, and cultivation at 3970 Commerce Drive. I just want to let those in the audience know, we have a couple of public hearings this evening. When I open the public hearing, it will be an opportunity for the applicant to speak, and then I will entertain any comments from interested parties. So we'll start with the presentation from Mr. Hardy.
Chair, members of the commission, guest tonight before you is a CUP and DA for a cannabis distribution, manufacturing, and cultivation facility at the aforementioned Commerce Drive address. The project is surrounded by similar uses and zoning to the east and south, and it's M2 to the east, or to the west, and Union Pacific Railroad to the north. The existing building, as you see above, is roughly 30,000 square feet and is vacant The applicant again is requesting the use permit for distribution, which is already allowed in the zone by previous river wellness project. The other two, cultivation and manufacturing, will ultimately go through with ordinance 17-7 that you heard on October 5th, later through the council's process. The DA and the use permits will also go forth as a package. The project applicant already does offer experience in their current operations in Adelanto and San Bernardino for the similar uses. They've been operating for roughly a month, or thereabouts. That facility was also visited by our own police and fire department previously. The, as I mentioned earlier, the distribution is just simply the use permit in DA where the manufacturing and cultivation are not yet approved, subject to ordinance 17-17 being adopted ultimately by council. Both the applicants, fire, and police have all met and gone over the project as we have previously. This project is very similar to existing, I mean, previously heard uses before the commission and council, and at this time, we still only have one business that's actually open and operational on its river wellness. Everybody else is still somewhere in the process. No building permits have been applied for at this time, so we'll see where any of these ultimately end up down in the future. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any of them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy. I'm going to begin with questions and comments from my commissioners, and then we'll move into the public hearing. So I'll actually start on my right with Vice Chair Sturmphels. Any questions or comments for staff? Commissioner Vu?
I'll hold.
Commissioner Liebig, okay, great, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing, and this is an opportunity for the applicant to come up if they would like to provide a presentation that's not required. And be sure to introduce yourself, please, thanks.
My name is Gene Stonberger. Should I turn this on?
No.
Oh, there you go. Thanks, Justin. Yes, good evening. My name is Gene Stonberger. I'm the managing member of Sierra Gold Extracts. Here with me is my partner, Ryan Matsuo. We both graduated from UC Davis together in 1997, and it's great to be back a part of the local community here. Jared Overmeyer with me, and Karen Streeter, our architect. Jared Overmeyer is also a member of our company and also part of the construction team. But really, it's a pleasure to be here. It's been a pleasure so far to work with the city, with Justin on the project. We appreciate all the hard work. It's, we've enjoyed West Sacramento, we've enjoyed the process in Adelanto as well. We began that process and received our permits last August, and we started development of the facility last November, and we have got our, we've received our certificate of occupancy for the manufacturing facility, and we have been producing both non-volatile since July and volatile since September. And everything's been going very smoothly there, and we're really happy with the project and the process so far. And as always, you know, we always welcome communications with the city of Adelanto, and we're happy to give tours to anyone from West Sacramento that would be interested in seeing that facility at any time as well. But again, that's our Southern California facility. We're really excited about having the Northern California facility. All of us grew up in Northern California, you know, this is home to us. Ryan lives about 15 minutes away in the Pocket area, and I live just up in El Dorado Hills. My office is in Folsom, and I also run out of my office in Folsom CB1 Brands. That's owned by CB1 Labs, Inc., which I'm the CEO of, and we have, that's our branding company, and we license our brands to our production facilities to produce the product. And so, really happy with the team that we've developed on that front, and being engaged in the process here, and we understand some of the concerns, I think, to make sure that we don't have signage that's advertising our location. We've gone over a lot of these concerns with the police department, and we understand the security measures, and we have, I believe, very adequate and strong security plan in place for this facility. So I'd like to welcome any questions you may have from me or members of our construction team. I would like to add, you know, my expertise is in attorney for 17 years locally. Ryan, his expertise, he worked for Genentech at the largest cancer drug manufacturing facility in the world, there at Vacaville, and we're really excited to apply our skill sets that we've learned from other industries, including my agricultural background, my family being agriculture, and apply them in this industry, and to be leaders in this industry. So with that, I'll thank you and open it up to any questions you might have for me.
Great, thank you. I don't have any requests to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing that, thank you. So actually, if you want to remain for just one moment, I'll see if my fellow commissioners have any questions for you or for staff, given some of the comments that you've just made, and also for Commissioner Liebig.
I don't have any questions of the applicant, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Vu? Vice Chair Sturmphels?
I just had one question for city staff. So when I visited the site, I noticed there's a door that kind of has a sidewalk leading up, a path from the sidewalk leading up to it on the very front of the building, and the rest of the building's gated off, which is kind of the normal security protocol we've seen with other facilities. But I noticed there's like an entryway door there, and I'd just be interested in knowing from a safety standpoint if that's something that's going to remain, or be like a fire exit only, or something where people will be entering in and out of.
And if, Justin, Jared's happy to help answer that question, too.
Yeah, either can answer it.
If you want to proceed, and then introduce yourself.
That door is being removed.
One sec, you can introduce yourself and speak into the mic so people can hear you.
I'm Jared Overmeyer, I'm the project developer, and that door's being removed. There will be no access into that building unless it's behind two levels of security gates.
Great, that was my only question, thank you very much.
Perfect. I am prepared to close the public hearing unless there are additional questions for the applicant.
I'm sorry, I did have one.
That's fine.
Well, it's probably best suited for the applicant. I had a question on the site plan. So we're looking at distribution, so I see that on the site plan, and then I'm assuming the indoor growing is going, is that what's going into the lab, the areas marked as lab?
So there, and so we'll put up the site plan, but there is indoor, the indoor grow will be under 10,000 square feet indoor, and that's separate from the manufacturing facility. It's all under the same, in the same 3,000 square foot building, of course, but it is separated off.
All of the grows on the left-hand side, those six rooms.
Go ahead, Jared, go ahead. The cultivation will be in the six rooms on the Plan West, I guess, the six rooms are all the same size.
Okay, the ones that are called, that are labeled for, I read that as manufacturing.
Well, that was all changed to, to make the plan, you know, less detailed, kind of generic.
Okay. Gotcha, I do understand that.
Yeah, but that's, those six rooms, that will be the cultivation, and then the large room below, what does it say on the plan? The large room in the middle, the largest room in the middle portion of the building will be the vegetation, which is the small plants and clones.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. I will close the public hearing and turn it over for additional discussion with my colleagues. Go ahead and start with you, Commissioner Liebig.
Sure, thank you. One, I want to acknowledge the staff, staff's work on this package and the presentation of detail in a consistent manner. It made it very easy to get through, and somebody could imagine how complicated these can be, so, and we're seeing three tonight, so I definitely wanted to acknowledge staff's work on their packaging of these. I have just a comment on the location. It's a good location, I think it's an okay location. This could be the third project we're putting in a very small area, if considering other projects that are currently under review. That said, the location, I still think, is a good location, because, one, it's talked on the other side of the freeway, next to the railroad track, there's no houses over there, so I do still think that's a good, good location. I have a question for staff. I've asked this question before, and I apologize, I keep having to ask, it's just not sticking with me. Air quality, I know we require filtration for the manufacturing as well as for the indoor cultivation. Can you tell me, under what condition is that covered?
We actually hardwired that into the municipal code when we did those changes a few months back, so that's essentially an objective requirement in the zoning ordinance now, rather than making it a project-specific condition.
Okay, so it doesn't actually fall under any of the specific conditions for the project, except for the one that says basically that it has to comply with all city standards?
Yes, that's correct. That's how, where that, that and all other standard requirements would be captured.
Okay, thank you. I'm, there was a reason I was asking that question, and I'm comfortable with that. The fact that I just keep not seeing it, and I haven't committed that to memory, I'm probably going to ask it again in the future, but not tonight. That's, that's all my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Vu?
No questions?
Vice Chair Sturmphels, any comments or questions?
No.
Alright, so I have a couple of comments to Commissioner Liebig's point. I like to try and look at the policy implications when we are looking at the zoning and land use changes, which we do separate from the applicants. When I get the applications, the two biggest considerations that I look at are the location and the team, and I feel very confident in this team, thank you very much for that presentation. You know, I'm really looking for someone who has some pretty strong industry experience. I think that people, I don't want a novice to come in, in large part, because this is an industry, and it's a new industry, and I really want to feel confident. And so I mentioned this to this particular applicant, but we have several people in the, in the audience as well, so I think that's a really important consideration. I want to feel confident that you're going to be not just responsible business owners, but actually a little bit on the conservative side, and being able to make sure that you're going to run a successful business in our city, and cooperate with our, with our city staff and public safety. So, yeah, so I'm fairly comfortable with this application and look forward to moving through the agenda. So with that, I'll entertain additional discussion or motions.
I'll move the recommended action.
I will second.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Sturmphels, and a second from Commissioner Liebig. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with a city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
The next item we are looking at is item three. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed vesting tentative parcel map at 51, parcel map 5125, planned development permit, and washing specific plan minor deviation at 420 G Street, Mr. Laffey. I'm sorry, and just as a reminder, I have one request to speak. If there are additional requests to speak, please complete a request to speak card and turn it into the clerk. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. This item before you tonight is for a tentative, vesting tentative parcel map to split the existing 425 G Street parcel into four lots. It's a fairly small parcel, it's an infill, infill lot in our Washington specific plan area. Here's a map of where it is, so it's pretty close to the corner of Fifth and G Street. As you can see, it's a fairly small lot. So the lot currently has a single-family home on it, and it's boarded up right now, and it's ripe, ripe for redevelopment. So here's an exhibit of the vesting tentative map. You can see the four lots there, and the applicant is intending to develop it with townhomes, small lot townhomes, zero setbacks, similar to what you might see at Third and C Street. So the applicant provided a conceptual floor plan of the first floor, and they're requesting, the applicant's requesting minor deviations from the Washington specific plan and plan development, different lot, alternative lot development standards to accommodate this type of development. The Washington specific plan was written about 20 years ago, and that hasn't been updated to reflect the current upzoning from the general plan 2035. This property is now zoned waterfront, which has a density of 40 to 120 units per acre, 40 being the min, 120 being the max. So the existing Washington specific plan development standards don't quite align with that density, and that's the reason why the applicant's requesting the alternative lot development standards. So those alternative lot development standards would be a zero setback in between the lots that are before, are on this, are on this map, and then a three-foot setback between these lots and neighboring properties on the side. And the waterfront zone has an eight-foot, requires an eight-foot setback in the rear. The applicant's showing, I believe, a 10, so they do have some little bit of room to play with in the rear. And the Washington specific plan requires 10, 10 feet minimum setback and a 20-foot, 20-foot maximum setback along G Street, so they need that requirement. Before you tonight are the lot development, alternative lot development standards for the setbacks, and the vesting tentative, tentative map. Elevations weren't provided, nor were second or third floor plan provided, but we do have the first floor plan. Staff is also requesting the Planning Commission certify the proposed Class 32 infill exemption with the mitigation measures for cultural resources that are within the Washington specific plan EIR, and incorporate those as conditions into the project. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here in attendance to answer any questions, and so am I.
Thank you very much. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I'll hear from the applicant if they would like to give a presentation.
Hi, for the record, my name is Portellus, I'm the owner of this property. Seamus, do you have a little presentation that I sent you? Is that, oh, is it up? I think this project, even though it's small, it has a large significance from a symbolic standpoint, and it's indicative of where the city has come in the last 15 years. I'm going to show you some projects that I've worked on before. This is a project I developed with a partner about, gosh, 12 years ago, and Mr. Tilly's smiling, because that's a project that we kind of cut our teeth on. It was an innovative project at the time, and it was really the first introduction of three-story townhomes in the area. You know, obviously, very high density, and it's been a pattern for subsequent projects to come from. In fact, one of the projects that is proposing to use this density is directly across the street, so this is, what I'm proposing with these four lots is a mirror image of what is being proposed across the street, which I think is a tremendous asset to the community. It increases property values, you know, this type of density and having these sorts of homes together puts eyes on the street, reduces crime, just a lot of very positive impacts. And obviously, this is kind of becoming a little bit of a cultural hub with Bean and Barrel going in, and then, you know, it fits nicely with a 250-bed hospital that's going in across the river. This is Bean and Barrel, but these, these project, these houses right here are great precedent images for the types of houses that would be built on these parcels, and similar to what's already built right now. There's, this is a great, a great precedent image for what the project would look like when it's completed. And again, I'm just asking for a tentative map. I haven't submitted any plans for the project, and anything that, you know, would be approved from a design standpoint would obviously come before you before the project's actually built. I don't know if you have any questions, I can reserve some time for questions if you have them. Instead of trying to anticipate them and talk about things I think they're going to ask about, I think I'll just wait to hear what you have to say, so...
Well, thank you for that presentation. It sounds like you might have some additional information if we ask about it. Vice Chair Sturmphels, do you have any questions or comments for the applicant or for staff? Yes, so there is someone who would like to speak on the side, would you like to hear from them first, or do you have questions?
I'd like to.
Okay.
I'll wait.
Okay, alright.
Okay, so...
You can continue, or you can, you can...
I think what I'll do, I know that you all are, you know, everyone's time is valuable, so I'm not going to take up any more time, but I'm happy to, I'd like to answer questions if you have them, and thank you.
At this time, we don't have questions. I have one request to speak, and if there are questions that come up for the applicant, we can...
Oh, I got you, I didn't catch that.
Okay, that's a problem.
Thank you, thanks for your time.
Thank you. I have one request to speak from Tom Engel.
Hi, my name's Tom Engel. I own a property around a corner from the current project being presented, and I am really not appreciative of you guys packing them in without providing any parking. Your parking here for Bean and Barrel is a prime example of allowing residents to come in without providing any parking. They are allowed to use the parking over at the fire station. You guys took my parking away when you put in the development at Fourth Street, across the street from 704 Street. I have no frontage parking. You gave that to the people across the street. I still have a street, it's not abandoned, but the parking is taken away from me. And here, they're going to allow, you're going to, if you approve this, you'll allow more driveways and less parking. My guests have to park maybe a block or two away. It's absolutely ridiculous. And you have a commercial property that might come in, and you'll, you make them provide all the parking, down a nugget, down Southport. That parking lot's big enough to put his little project on, but you come in with a little residential parking and you take it away from people. Mine's a good example. I have no parking in front of my house, zero, because you allow them, you allow the developer to take my frontage improvement. I can't even park across the street because of this. It's absolutely ridiculous how you're packing us in and not providing any parking. How do you expect your parents to park in front of your house? Do they have to walk a block, two blocks? It's absolutely ridiculous how you're packing them in with no parking. And it's not safe. Where are they going to park two cars? Do they really have one car? No, more than likely, there's probably two. Where are they going to park? Do you want them to use public transportation? Oh, yeah, absolutely, that would be great if we had it. You're putting a cart before the horse when you do this. It's ridiculous. What about bikes? Those streets aren't wide enough for bicycles. Where's a bike going to ride safely around there? The corners are small, they're not round, you know, they're not large, you know, turning radiuses at all, and you're going to pack them in with cars. And where's a bike going to ride safely? Do you know? Do you have an answer for that? I seriously want you to consider approving this project as it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Engel. I will actually turn it over to my colleagues to see if they have additional comments or questions, and if they do, for the applicant, they can, that can be an opportunity for us to respond, I'll turn it back over to Vice Chair Sturmphels. Again, keeping in mind that we're keeping the public hearing open.
Yeah, I'll hold my comments after we close the public hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Vu?
I'll hold this one.
Commissioner Liebig?
As far as I'm sorting through my comments to see it clear, they can be held, thank you.
Okay. Does the applicant have a response after I close the public hearing?
Thanks, thank you for that. I don't know how to get this back to the original. Okay, that's great. Is there, there, that's, that's perfect. So, yeah, parking obviously is a, is a very important, important issue. This project provides both off-site parking and also allows the way that the driveways are oriented... are oriented, to allow for parking spaces in front of the houses, so they're not so dense, the driveways, by bunching them together, they aren't so dense that you have, you know, that you have no parking in front of the, of the house, which, which can happen in high-density areas. The, you know, obviously, there's, there's a garage area, and then the distance available for parking on the driveways is eighteen feet, and when you look at the top twenty most popular cars sold in the United States, every one of those cars will fit on that driveway, you know. I just took some, you know, by example, a Toyota Camry, which is obviously a very popular vehicle, sixteen feet long, a Honda Odyssey, which I don't presume will be the type of car that the person buying this home will drive, but if they wanted to, it will fit, they are seventeen feet long. And in fact, I think the number-one-selling vehicle in the country is a Ford F-150 pickup truck, which measures, measures seventeen feet, point four-one inches, and that, you know, granted, it would be kind of tight, and again, I don't think that's the vehicle of choice for someone living here, but it would fit on that driveway as well, so there, there actually is, there actually is parking here off the street for, for two cars. And then also, like I said, by the orientation of the driveway, there's a lot of park, there's parking on the street, so I hope that answers the gentleman's question.
Great, I appreciate you responding, and there may be an opportunity, if you are interested in, in speaking with, speaking with the gentleman after this, that'll be your, that'll be your prerogative.
Absolutely.
So, thank you. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I will turn it back over to my commissioners. I'll start with Commissioner Liebig this time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Seamus. Typically, for variances like this, we actually have a project in front of us, so it's a little unusual that we are, we are approving a map like this with variances without an actual project. So, I've got some, some questions about that, but on that note, given that we actually have the Washington specific plan and now the, the new general plan, I do understand the, the goal with densities. Regarding the setbacks, are the setbacks on this project consistent with the general plan?
So, the, the general plan, yes. The general plan doesn't really get into that quite detail in terms of setbacks, but the zoning ordinance does, and that has an eight-foot setback for the waterfront zone. That's what, they will be deviating from that. This is in the Washington specific plan, which further refines, has its own development standards, so it's not a variance, but he's requesting it's plan development, alternative lot development standards, which have, have different findings.
Yeah, and what's proposed to you tonight is not that dissimilar to the urgency project that Mr. Tellez referenced in his presentation, and, and some of the others that we have seen in that district since then, where a lot of the underlying standards in the Washington plan talked about, you know, really things that were sort of incongruent with the planned densities and the building forms, that those densities, you know, typically result in. So, you're right, it is more customary to have a more formally-defined project before you, especially when you're considering any type of exceptions, but we could, you know, think of this as a, you know, as the interim step to get to an actual project, because now they'll essentially have a building envelope defined, and then we still have design review on the subsequent development of the property.
And that's actually my next question. So, when this comes back, and I'm assuming they'll, they'll submit more than one story, the project would come under design review, is that with the city staff, or does that actually come back to us?
Design review would be done by city staff, given where you're at on this one. If you wanted that to come before you, you certainly could do it. We would have to add a condition along that, with those lines, but it would not come back to you automatically.
Generally, I've been pretty confident in staff. The Washington specific plan has been pounded out through decades, although it could probably use a refresher.
That is something we will be working on here as soon as we can finish with cannabis, hopefully.
I'm still confident in staff's determination, but the parking was what triggered these questions. It's, it's a little concerning to be approving these densities without being able to see the actual project, and so I would, you know, want to emphasize, consider parking and making sure that it can do what it says it can in park two, two vehicles, for example. We are in that awkward stage, especially in the Wash, Washington specific area, where, where we're approving denser projects, but the, no, with limited parking, we, we know we're doing that, and we're also doing it without public transportation in place, but we know that it's coming, and we're in these, we're in that stage right now where we have some growing, growing pains. At this project, there's still, there's actually still nothing across the street. I, I do understand that Mr. Engel is on Fifth Street, and that is a pretty major thoroughfare for our city. You're on Fourth, I'm sorry, I thought you were on Fifth. It's going to be awkward for a little while, but we can't necessarily bring in the public transportation without having the houses there, and so it, it's a, it's going to take some time, but I think we'll get there. One comment on bikes, I actually bike, and there are problems in the city with bike paths, but this, this area right here isn't really a problem for me, anyway. Going down to your guys' house, however, there are some pinch points, I'll note that. So, on some other comments, I apologize, I spread mine kind of throughout. Seamus, there's a, there appears to be a lot behind this one, in between the apartment complex and this property. Are we, are we creating an isolated property? I'm looking at the aerial, aerial photo.
What detachment number is it?
Attachment one.
Oh, I'm sorry, attachment one.
Yes, you have to go back, you have to go back to the staff presentation.
So, I'm going to, yeah, pulling up the vicinity map on the second slide.
Slide two.
There is that lot behind, from what I recall, that's the lot that fronts on the Fifth Street.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the access, access to it's not changing, and that is something that we review with a tentative map, but it.
Is that a street or an alley behind there?
That's a parking lot. There's not, there's not an alley behind, behind there.
So, in my pulling up the, the map on Google, there's, there's a property behind, directly behind this property and the one to the left of it, that has access to Fifth Street, is their driveway. There's also another property behind it and to the right of it that has access to the Fourth Street entrance. So, there's actually two properties that are behind the four that front G Street, but they each have access one to Fifth and one to Fourth. So, that's my understanding, is that accurate, Seamus?
Yeah, that was my understanding, too.
Okay. I think those are all my questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu.
Just a brief comment, I just want to align my, my comments with Commissioner Liebig's on the parking situation in the area, I know it's been brought up to us at least a couple of times over the last several months about the challenges of parking in that area now with all the new businesses and all the dense residential areas popping up. I, and I think, you know, with what Mr. Liebig said, you know, with, I think we need to, we're getting to the point where we need to start considering how we can alleviate some of those problems, you know, as we're redeveloping and doing a lot more infill into that region or into that community, so, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Vice Chair Sturmfels.
Yeah, I want to start by thanking Mr. Engel for coming out and sharing his concerns with us on the project. I can, I, I don't, I didn't catch exactly his address, and I don't know the exact dynamics around it, but it sounds like parking is a real challenge for him, and that's, that's unfortunate, and I totally understand your frustration on it. That said, I actually walk, when I come to this meeting most nights, down G Street and pass this property. I pass this property a hundred times on foot and on bike, on my way to this meeting, or other meetings in the town, or when I'm just heading home some nights. This property is an eyesore. It has been vandalized, it's got fencing up around it that's been pulled apart, there's trash around it, it is, it is not a pleasant sight on this block. Also said, I work a block from here, and I parked on Fifth and G Street today. Parking is not a problem, at least during Monday through Friday, eight to five, on these two blocks, and when I look at parking, I tend to look at immediate vicinity, so I know we have some severe parking issues in other areas of the Washington neighborhood, but I can, I can say with confidence that this block does not have an issue with parking at all. As a matter of fact, there's more spaces than available, I could have had my choice of fifty today when I parked, and I parked twice on two separate occasions in this, on the street today. So, I have no, no concerns on the parking end. I do share Commissioner Liebig's concern that the project isn't fully before us, but that said, any progress we can make on, on, on improving this, this site and location, given its current status, and also the signal that it sends to maybe some of the surrounding property owners who are working on projects and, you know, need, need a positive boost, I'm all for. So, thank you for bringing it for us tonight.
Yeah, I want to echo what my fellow commissioners have said so far, most notably, Vice Chair Sturmfels, I'm totally on board with some of the observations that you've made, and comments you've made. I think that parking is a real concern in Washington, I think we need to keep working on it, and, and address really valid concerns of, of residents. I also agree that this particular property, I don't have concerns about, from an anecdotal perspective, that there, I'm not concerned about parking, and furthermore, I've ridden my bike with two small childrens and a bike, children in a bike trailer, up and down, right and right around this property, and I feel fairly safe with that. We, we are working on, we have active transportation plan and improvements that are well underway throughout the city, so I, I feel pretty comfortable with that as well, and I agree that we really need to work on improving our transit, which isn't entirely the purview of the city, that also involves our, our partners throughout the county. So, because I don't have concerns about parking for this particular property, I don't, I don't doubt that you may have some significant parking issues around your property, but for this particular property, I'm not concerned about that, even with contemplated densities of what's currently allowable. So, those are, those are my comments, but I'm fairly supportive of, of this proposal, and again, can't underscore enough what Vice Chair Sturmfels has said, it feels like we are still pretty far out in the development and construction of this particular property, so please hear us loud and clear that, because we're approving this, we really expect to see some movement sooner rather than later, so, you know, appreciate your hard work on, on that, Mr. Tellez. So, with that, I'll entertain additional discussion or a motion from my colleagues.
I'll move the recommended action.
I have a motion from Commissioner Liebig, and a second from Commissioner Vu. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission's matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within ten days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
We are now moving on to item four, public hearing regarding the proposed development agreement and conditional use permit for cannabis distribution at thirty-nine, thirty-nine West Capitol Avenue, Suite C. Mr. Laffey.
So, the applicant is requesting a development agreement and a conditional use permit to operate a wholesale cannabis logistics transportation facility out of thirty-nine, thirty-nine West Capitol Avenue, Suite C. And the suite is in the middle of the, the building, it's a multi-tenant building. This is, most of the cannabis projects that have come before the Planning Commission in the past have been single-tenant, so this is a little bit different. Police and fire and myself went out and met with the applicant on-site, and discussed security measures that could be taken to address the multi-tenant nature of the building, and agreed upon the fact that if they put an exterior fence in front of their, their suite, that would satisfy the police's concern for, for, for security. So, here's a, this is their suite, you can see it's in the middle of the building, it's away from, from West Capitol Avenue, so they're proposing to put a seven-foot wrought iron fence in front of the suite for security. Katie, can you go back? The request is predicated on the approval of the ordinance that went before you on October fifth. This is in the ML Limited Industrial Zone, and the ordinance that came here October fifth would conditionally allow distribution, cannabis wholesale distribution, logistics and transportation in the limited industrial zone. This, this project is similar to previous conditional use permits and DAs that the Planning Commission and City Council has approved, very similar to River Wellness, which was approved in twenty sixteen. The applicant is here tonight, and with that, I'll end my presentation.
Thank you. I think we will move forward to the, opening the planning, the public hearing again. So, open the public hearing, and we'll hear from the applicant, and I currently do not have any request to speak, so if you would like, if there's someone non, not with the applicant who wants to speak, please fill out a, a comment card and turn it in to the clerk, but if the applicant would like to come forward.
Thank you for hearing us tonight. We're real excited about this project. My name is Michael Ramirez, and I'm the co-founder of Gold Mountain Distribution. Who I have in the audience with me tonight is my business partner, Ari, excuse me, Arianna Moise, who's also the co-founder. I did listen to what you had to say about having experience. I know you guys have read the packet, and you've seen that, I don't personally have a ton of experience in this industry. My, my experience comes from twenty years of firefighting. I've been a professional firefighter for a very long time. I'm also a fire instructor, law enforcement instructor, I'm a contractor, kind of a jack-of-all-trades, but most importantly, I am a West SAC resident, and I'm a father of kids who were raised here, born and raised. I feel that's very important. I know the city, although I've only lived here for eight years, my wife is, we've never lived more than a mile and a half from the spot that we live in right now. This city is, has done a lot for us, and it's important that we have the opportunity to give back. We feel really strong about what we're doing. This business, the cannabis business, is not only a great business predicted to be in, but it's, more importantly, it's giving back, giving back to the people who need it the most, and that's in the medical side. We're fortunate enough to see the good and bad of the effects of, of cannabis with cancer, personally, very personally with my father this last year, who I lost because of, because of cancer, but I've seen the opposite, I've seen where cannabis is healed, and I'm very fortunate and excited to be a part of this program because of that. My partner's got over twenty years of experience in this, but she's also a soccer mom that has two kids. She's very well-educated, and as you guys seen in the packet, she's a year and a half away from her doctorate in, in sports medicine, but she is very versed in this program. We have been, the last few months, statewide, meeting, collaborating with some big and small farms dispensaries, we, farms and dispensaries, we feel very confident that we're going to be a huge success here in Sacramento, or West Sacramento, and I feel that the city is going to benefit from this, more than just with the revenue that we generate and give back to this community. Why I have the second, I would just really like to thank the staff. I've seen, from, being from public service, I've seen nightmares, but this, working with the staff here in West Sacramento, has been unbelievable for us. Everything from Lieutenant Steele, Chief Johnson, Cor Seamus, it's, it's been a very good experience for us and a pleasure, and I know there's other people excited about doing business here because of our experience. So with that, that's all I have, unless you can ask some questions for us?
Thank you. I'll start with Vice Chair Sturmfell's. Any questions, and this can also be for staff? Okay. Vice Commissioner Vu. And Commissioner Leibig.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, for your presentation. I have some questions regarding the tenant improvements that you're, you're planning. This is an unusual site for, for a business like this. Can you describe the, how you actually see the, the day-to-day truck interaction occurring at the site? And what other tenant improvements, in addition to the fencing that was mentioned by staff, are you planning?
We're, we're taking the proper security measures with not only a security system, but with the camera systems throughout the building. We're also, without getting into too much detail, we presented to law enforcement our plan, but there is extra fortification, if you will, with inside the building. Our day-to-day, again, without, without elaborating too much, our day-to-day operations will involve vehicles coming in to our secured area, which we have multiple secure areas, but coming into our secured area. But everything is planned. There is no, first of all, this isn't open to the public. There is no unannounced deliveries or, or pickups, if you, if you will, that will happen at our location. Everything is controlled by software, and we know plenty ahead of time that the vehicles will be coming in. So for security-wise, when we have a vehicle that would, a properly identified vehicle that would approach our building, we would have either management or security dealing with that as they come in. And I hate to be so vague, I, I, I'm not sure on, on how much detail that you're really looking for.
And I'll say that we don't, we don't expect you to compromise some of these security plans, so.
And I, and again, I, I don't want to be so vague, but we did, as you know, met with, with staff, and I think that we're over-planning and not under-planning when it comes to this.
Okay, thanks.
I have two questions, and so hear me out for the two questions before you respond. The first is, I'd love for you to talk a little bit about your entrepreneurship background. So a little bit of your history, kind of the breadth and depth of that experience, whether it's you, your, you or your business partners, or any investors who might be involved in this. And my second question is, if you could talk a little bit about what kind of impact there may be to your business plan, or financially, or whatever, if you, based on timing for your application process?
Let me write it down so I don't miss it. So first of all, our entrepreneur side, currently, I'm funding the whole program. I don't, we don't have anybody else. It's just Ariana and I that are funding this. Either monies that I've dealt with from my public service side, or coming from my contractor's side. Been very fortunate to do projects across this country with my business. Most recently, though, the, the project I love the most, that's so close, I built an amphitheater along the river for the Culinary Institute of America in Napa. I've been very lucky in, in my life, in more than one way. So that's where our funding comes from. We don't have anybody else. It's just us. And I do have other, another business that I will talk about, but it doesn't really generate much money, but it's called the Public Safety Survivor's Benefit. And what this benefit, or business that we do, is myself plus two attorneys, and at any time a law enforcement or firefighter passes away in the line of duty anywhere in the country, and they have been denied benefits from local, state, or federal benefits that they should receive, we represent those families. And that is near and dear to me, because I've been involved with the National Fallen Firefighters in Fall, back in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and I've been involved in over 100, easily over 100 funerals. That was one of my jobs, is for firefighters in the state. So that may not make a bunch of money, but that's not what it's for. So those are the businesses that I'm really still involved in, in that, you know, the construction for the last four months has been pushed off to the side so I could deal strictly with this, to ensure that there is no bumps in the road, ensure that the city is satisfied, and ensure that my partner and myself are satisfied. The second part about the timing, you know, I love it, I've worked for the state for a long time. My wife's worked for the state for a very long time, and we also know that there's a lot of things that are happening, and it's a very dynamic situation. I know you, all, everybody involved knows that it's a dynamic situation with the state as we're coming up with regulations coming up soon, and the laws have changed over the last couple of months. And there is a, a, could be a rumor, could be a prediction that there might be a limited amount of licenses that are given out in each category. We don't know. We don't want to take that chance. And one of our fears is, is that if we're not properly licensed, which we, that we really, you know, feel that we're in a good spot right now, but if we're not properly licensed before the first couple of weeks within January, that there's a possibility we could miss the boat on that. And that's why we worked with staff so closely to try to ensure that everything was done as quick as possible. But even, even acquiring property, you know, it took me a year to find the right location. This may not be the ideal location in, in maybe your eyes, but this location where it sits, and certainly because of the neighbors, and, and it's, it's so close to the highway and the size, it's, it's a very good fit for us. I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you very much. So before I close the public hearing, do my fellow commissioners have additional comments or questions?
Yeah, actually, Commissioner Leibig's comments brought up a question in my mind. Was the, and maybe I missed this, Seamus, in your presentation, but the, is there a reason we, we went against putting the gate in the front of the building as opposed to, and just in front of the?
Yeah, so it's a multi-tenant building, so the purpose of that is to have the vehicle. So you have two kind of secure facilities, one's exterior, one's interior. They would have their vehicle roll into the exterior one, they close the gate, and they can go into the interior gate, close that. If you have it at the front entrance, that kind of defeats the purpose, because it's multi-tenant. So you have other businesses that would be coming in, and it's not as secure.
Yeah, I wasn't thinking instead of, I was thinking in addition to.
Oh, in addition, oh.
And I only think that because the other, and I may be misremembering, but the, the current project that's in operation was also a multi-tenant building that had a gate on the front as well. I think it may have been existing.
That's, that's correct. It was, it was existing, and, and there also was not another tenant in that building at the time we went, that one went through. I'm not sure if there is another one in there now, but I think those were essentially two large, you know, tenant spaces in that particular building. But any, you know, obviously, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar with the other tenants in this particular building and sort of what their, nature of their business is, but, you know, it's something we could work on with the property owner to see if it were feasible to fence the property and not unduly restrict the comings and goings of the other, other businesses.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm, I'm comfortable making that ask at this point, but I didn't want, I was interested in knowing if it had been considered or discussed with either the property owner or the other tenants. And it sounds like it hadn't, has not been yet.
I can answer that. So it has been discussed. I discussed it with the property owner before I met with the city. The issue that we have, and I, and the other tenants that are in this property, there, there is, on the very corner of it is Cromer, who does forklifts, who's in and out of there all day long. They have customers that come in and out all day long. Having a gate out front would impede on them. The very back corner along Highway 80 is Mr. Pops. Mr. Pops is in and out all day long, and he does, he doesn't have a lot of foot traffic, but his vehicles go in and out all day long. So that would be the issue, and the, the thought for us in the first place, when we were talking about doing the fencing, we would make it match our neighbors who are also putting up the, the iron fence, and it would look good. But it solved a couple of issues for us. It, it allowed that first, that first initial security area. I'm very aware of the issues that have happened up in, up in Napa in recent time that has made some folks a little bit nervous. This really truly does eliminate that, because how we have it set up, again, not to get into too much detail, but the second door doesn't open up until that whole vehicle's been identified and that area's been cleared. And it's much more of a controllable area. If we were just to fence off the front, we wouldn't have that same amount of control. So in a sense, this is, with Sallyport, you know, it's the term that they use with prisons, this creates a first Sallyport, which is very, very crucial for us to identify. And I like the security better this way than even fencing off the whole property, personally.
And I understand, I think this is just the first project that we've seen, and we just, at our last meeting, talked about your neighbor, who also has, similar to what you're describing, but in addition to has a gate on the front and fencing across the whole front of the property. And so I was just trying to compare, I mean, our, what we've seen so far, this is a little different from. And so I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure we explored it and discussed it, so thank you.
I understand, thank you.
Anything else? All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and thank the applicant for his presentation and responses.
Thank you very much.
So we've closed the public hearing. I'll entertain additional discussion, and I'll start with Vice Chair Sturmfell's.
No, I just, I thank the applicant for their, their presentation and wanting to do business here in, in West Sacramento. It is a little different of a setup for me, and I'm, I, it probably raises a little bit of alarm only because, you know, after hours or nights or weekends, someone could pull into that property and probably be pretty out of view of folks driving by, and if they were trying to break in or something. And so that, that's the reason why the gate on the front is of interest to me. It's not necessarily to replace your secure area, but to add an additional layer of security during non-operation hours to ensure that folks aren't, aren't able to access your property when no one else is around. Even if there are security measures in place to detect that, just eliminating access is probably the, the best prevention. And so I, I appreciate you allowing me to explore that with you. It'd still be my preference that there were some kind of gate, even if it was open during the daytime hours, along the front of the property that shut, and was closed when, when everyone ceased operations for the night, just because I feel like that's another layer of safety that could be there. But I recognize this is a multi-tenant building, and we don't have the property owner here. So I'll allow my other commissioner, fellow commissioners, a weigh-in on that.
To respond to you and your, and Commissioner Leibig's concerns, I wonder if this is a discussion topic that we would like the applicant to, to, to explore possibly with the other tenants and city staffers? Is that something that we feel like might be a condition that we would like to explore?
Well, when it gets to me, I thought that was a really good idea, but that's not a decision that can be made tonight, so I, I agree with that. I do not know if, how the staff or the applicant would feel about a continuance. I'm not opposed to one, so as, so as long as the applicant is okay with that, and we feel that it's worthwhile pursuing.
And if staff could clarify if there was a continuance, and with public hearing noticing requirements, could you tell us what was, what is the soonest that it could come forward? If this was something we wanted to explore?
Yeah, our next, we would, we would endeavor to bring it to our next meeting, which is on November 2nd.
I'll entertain some additional discussion on that topic. I don't know if there's staff would like to respond to that, to this discussion.
Nathan Steele and the Police Department would like to respond.
Okay, thank you so much.
Good evening. So first of all, your initial concern was my initial concern. This is different. It's a different project than what we've looked at before, and I had some of the same initial thoughts when we looked at the plans. We had a meeting, we went out to the site. The applicant was extremely helpful, and they have completely resolved any concern that we may have with exterior fencing. That was one of our first thoughts as well. Each one of these projects is very unique. The sites are very unique. So we have found that actually going on-site, doing the blueprints, and then walking the facility really is helpful. I'm confident that there, there's no need for exterior fencing on it. We're, we're comfortable with our plan.
Can, can you help share with us what got, what got you there to that level of comfort? Like what specifically about the site or layout or anything?
If I start doing that, I'm going to be getting into such detail of the security plan that I, I think that it would maybe be better on another venue. But there's unique components to this project, which kind of appease those concerns with, with exterior fencing.
Is there anything outside of additional improvements that are going to be made about the existing site conditions that remedy, remedied any of your concerns? Like existing light, things we can't see in the picture, like lighting or visibility?
Okay, so to keep vague, the reality matter is, one of the things we're looking at is, is how many entry points there are in, in a business, right? This facility has very few entry points on the business. There's nothing along the back of this business. There's no entry points. So those are the things that you'd be looking at when you want to start talking about having a mandated exterior fencing. So those types of things are things that we took into account with this project.
I'm not going to argue with Lieutenant.
And again, it's, I, we, we can do whatever we want, but it's actually reassuring that you guys are noticing these things, that are the same thing that I noticed right off the bat when I just had blueprints. But you felt clearly confident after doing the walkthrough.
Okay, I see, I see general accordance with my commissioners. Thank you so much for your, for your remarks. So any other thoughts after that?
Do you still have more?
No, no, I mean, I, it just, it's, it's different, that's all. It's, it's not necessarily good or bad, it's just, it's different. And I think there's, it may be like a false sense of security, having that exterior fence that was there on those others, on those other projects, that I just kind of expected to see it there with others. And it wasn't something we ever mandated on any project. I think maybe on the project next door, they were improving the fencing out front, but I don't, I don't know if that was mandated, it wasn't mandated from us.
Well, I mean, each project through the development agreement does may have to maintain the safety and security plan, you know, which will get vastly more detailed as they get to our construction level. And that's something our public safety representatives will continue to be involved with. Many of the other projects we've seen most recently, including the one next door, were sort of a single-tenant, single property. It's a little more practical to secure them from the perimeter. And so we'll continue to rely on what goes out in a safety and security plan. Even if you don't require any type of fencing or gate, there wouldn't be anything that would prohibit them from actually putting one in, you know, with the property owner. I confer with their fire marshal, he did believe that it could meet their requirements for a gate standard. So we want, you know, four there. So, you know, based on Lieutenant Steele's comments, that certainly is something that, you know, from a planning staff standpoint, you know, we, we would be comfortable with, if, if he is as comfortable with it as he stated.
And I'll, I'll chime in here. Given Lieutenant Steele's comments and the applicant's concerns about expediency, I'm comfortable with this particular project not having a condition of approval for an external fencing. That being said, I want to be really cognizant of the precedent that we are setting, and I think that it's, it will be important for us to look, and we have, I think, I think we've looked very closely at each of the applicant's kind of security plans. One of the tricky things is, is that in this public setting, we don't want to disclose all of the aspects of the security plans of this or any of the applicants. So, so with that said, I'm comfortable with this particular project, but I think it's really important for us to, to keep this in mind, and it may come up over time with future applicants.
Yeah, just only one other point. I mean, tonight is not, not necessarily our only crack at this. The development agreement has an annual review process in it, and part of that would be a review of their safety and security plan, especially after they have been operational. And so, you know, through that annual review process, if there are changes or other supplementary security measures that, you know, we, everyone determines think, you know, may very well be necessary, especially once they've been operating, there would be another opportunity to implement additional security measures through that annual review process.
Thank you for clarifying that.
I do have some comments.
Please.
Okay, thank you. These are just general, a little bit more holistic. Again, this will be the third, third project that we would be approving if we approve this project. And although I, I've made comments on the, one of the prior, or the prior project, I, I think it's okay, given, given the proximity where it is relative to the freeway, you know, the kind of boxed area that you're in out there. It seems like to be a good fit for the area. The awkward thing that I like, keep tripping over is the whole, that older multi-tenant building in a row. And if Lieutenant Steele is comfortable with the security of that, really, the only other thing I'm tripping up over is the fact that there's going to be a fence in the middle of the building, and I just think that's a little bit weird. But if the landlord can get past that, and the other tenants can get past that, I, I don't think, well, the current tenant. I, I don't think, well, the current tenant on the opposite side, I don't think a wrought iron fence would put that business at a disadvantage. And that's another thing that I was, it's a little bit weird that, you know, you're, you're making an area behind your fence as well. But it is an open wrought iron fence. So security is important, so I do understand the need for that. So my comments were just kind of general. And the reason I was bringing up the whole third in the area is I want to be aware of how many we're approving and how fast we're approving them. These seem to be coming at us very quickly now since we've been passing some ordinance changes. And these are all contingent, by the way, on, oh wait, actually, this one might not be. Some of these are contingent upon council still approving recommended recommendations that we've made to them that they haven't yet voted on, so.
Those will be going November 1st, just.
So I'm okay with this one as far as location, even though they're clustered. In the future, I just, I'm, I'm starting to track these in my head where all of these are. So we don't flood an area necessarily.
And to that point, I think that would be helpful moving forward, certainly between now and January 1st. And I'll just speak for myself, but if we had an attachment that had a map of the currently approved projects, I see, I see at least one commissioner nodding. That would be helpful for us to look both at concentration and it may help with, I don't know if it's more work, but a zoning overlay. So we just are looking at what kind of policy, so de facto policies that we are setting when we approve these individual projects.
Can I spin off that one?
Sure.
Rather than an attachment, maybe just a correspondence from city staff. I'm actually concerned about us pulling together maps of all of these locations in one spot.
Thank you, making it public.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the, ever since every one of these projects comes before the planning commission and council for that matter, I mean, they are a matter of public record, but we don't necessarily, you know, advertise them either. But right now, I, you have approved, now based on tonight, not including this particular one, I believe you have approved four cannabis-related businesses. Only one is operational and that's River Wellness that went through last year. The remainder of them are still some time away from becoming operational. You know, I think they're probably the next step for most of them is seeking that state license. And the state has made it clear that they will be issuing licenses come January 1st, albeit a temporary license for only 120 days. You know, it's the next major hurdle and the state, I know, is still, I think, putting together its, its regulations for that. And so that's the next major step for these businesses. Should they not be able to obtain a state license, they will not be able to become operational. And they all still have to apply for building permits and go through construction and then to get to the point where they can be operational. So none of them, none of the ones you have seen before are anywhere close to being ready to be operational and could be several months if they become operational at all. Right now, I think, other than what's on your agenda tonight, there may be only one other project that we're aware of that seems like it's for real and will come in and apply. Otherwise, all, with tonight's projects, you will have seen all of them that are currently proposed.
Well, regardless of activity, we are, like I, I still believe that what we're approving sets sort of a de facto policy essentially of, of where we are comfortable locating. And that may actually be instructive for future applicants, knowing what direction, you know, we are, what areas we are comfortable in and, and, you know, those kinds of things.
Can you make a comment?
Sure.
I was kind of struggling a little bit as to when it would be appropriate for me to make this comment, but I'm glad Mr. Lebig brought it up, so I can just jump in. But, you know, just the amount of these projects that we're, that we've been looking at for the last several months has just been, you know, oncoming. And I know early on, when this commission first started meeting this year, there was some discussion and some concern, I think, about, you know, the city getting the stigma of, you know, being about cannabis distribution and growing and all of that. I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, I think, now, at some point, we need to take a look, a step back and look at when is enough enough and when is too much, too much. Are we there yet? I, I don't think so. But at some point, you know, I don't know when we would, you know, have that marker of, no, is, is this enough for the city? But I just wanted to toss that out there.
Thank you. So we, it sounds like we, you know, we have more to discuss, but I will also entertain a motion if, on this particular project. Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Vu.
One second.
And a second for Vice Chair Sturm Fels. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions, the motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the planning commission in this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action. And the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much. Item number five is a public hearing regarding proposed development agreements and conditional use permits for wholesale cannabis logistics, distribution, transportation, cannabis manufacturing, and commercial indoor cannabis cultivation at 2424 Del Monte Street. Mr. Laffey.
All right, another cannabis item. So this one's at 2424 Del Monte Street. That's at the corner of Del Monte and Terminal. They, it's a, the applicant's proposing to occupy the whole site. So this one, unlike the other one, they would own the whole building. It's not, not multi-tenant. They are planning to purchase the property. So the owner would be Core One. And then Core One would lease it out to the applicant EH Tech Inc., DBA Nature's Market. So the applicant's requesting three separate conditional use permits. First one is for distribution. The second one is for cannabis manufacturing. And the third one is for commercial indoor cannabis cultivation. This property is zoned light industrial M1. Three sec, three separate resolutions are also necessary for the development agreement. So that's also being requested, the three separate development agreements for the different uses. This, this project is similar to previous conditional use permits and DAs. The planning commission and city council have approved for the 3705 Seaport LLC project. That came before planning commission a few months ago. The CUP and DAs for cultivation and manufacturing are predicated on city council approval of ordinance 17-8, which will amend, which will amend the municipal code to conditionally permit both of these uses in the light industrial zone. So here is a floor plan of the facility. It's, it's two, two buildings that have a shared, shared roof, but the space in between is not enclosed. There is the parking area and the office more towards the corner. There is a exterior fence that goes around the property, but that will need to be upgraded. There's some, certain sections that are kind of in disrepair and that'll be repaired. There is a rail line in the rear. So, and there's a loading and unloading area for the rail, which is covered. This property is surrounded by other light industrial, the whole area over there is zoned light industrial. So it's all zoned light industrial surrounding this property. In terms of proximity to the school, there is a, the Westmore Oaks Elementary School. There, there was concern initially regarding the proximity, but the school is on a separate property than the, the field. And the 2424 Del Monte Street is about 1,200 feet from the property that has the school on it. So this is a vicinity map showing the, a 600-foot buffer around the, the school site. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation. The applicant is in attendance.
I think I'll open the public hearing and allow questions for staff and applicant during that period. I currently have no request to speak. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, they need to complete a request to speak card and turn it in to the clerk. I'll open the public hearing and have the applicant come forward, or a representative from the applicant come forward. And be sure that each of you introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm Mayron Mogadom, CEO of Nature's Market. Today with me is Cameron Mogadom, our VP of Engineering, and also introduced to Dev Agonyon from Client Compliance and Legal.
Good evening. First and foremost, we want to thank the planning commission, the city attorney's office, David Tilly and Seamus Laffey for working very closely with us on this project, as well as the police and fire department.
Just a few slides we'll hand out to make it easier, just give a quick overview of our company. Overall, we're a biotech company. We're obviously focusing on cannabinoid products. The project is for manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation. You know, we like this facility, one of it being, because it's a secure facility, being with the, the perimeter is fenced in. It was a former beer distributorship of Coors was there. So it's nice as far as the loading docks, trucks can come in and out of it if needed. And as far as an overview on our team, actually, as I'm going to the next slide, our business segments, we do R&amp;D, manufacturing, cultivation, distribution, safety and security logistics, and then of course, our executive and administrative components of the company. For R&amp;D, we're actually currently in contract with the University of California, through one of our other related companies, doing cannabinoid research, a lot of pre-clinical work. Manufacturing, and in this facility, where I think a lot of the R&amp;D is going to be applied to, whether it be quality control, new product development, process improvements. It's been an interesting industry in how quickly everything's advanced as far as manufacturing, production of cannabinoid and cannabis products. So manufacturing, cultivation, and distribution, safety, security, logistics, and executive and administrative. A little about the facilities, you can see here, you know, on the, I guess it would be the west side, that's a 27,000 square foot refrigerated warehouse. Can be temperature controlled at 38 degrees. On the east side is where we'll have our manufacturing facility, distribution, and office space. Plenty of parking, plenty of power. Really ideal for a business of our operation and type. A little about my background. Again, I'm the CEO of Nature's Market. My background is in biotech, nutraceuticals, and agriculture, specifically organic almonds. I do have some experience in the industry consulting, actually nearby, two of the first licensed dispensaries in Sacramento. I helped work with those, those clients and working with the city to get them their retail licenses and have consulted a number of operations over the years in the industry as a business consultant. I have been in Yola County for some time in the past, going to undergrad and graduate school at UC Davis, studying biochemistry and getting a graduate degree, an MBA. Cameron Mogadom, our VP of Engineering, has more of a petrochemical background, environmental, oil and gas. Graduated UC Irvine Mechanical Engineering and also is involved with some of the safety and security parts of our business. One of our members of our scientific team, Guillermo Moreno, is PhD in neurosciences, focused a lot on pharmacology, specifically cannabinoids, and all sorts of interesting things within the industry as far as research and development. And as I mentioned, to Dev Agonyon, focuses on our compliance and legal side of the company. And there's a slide with some of the people working with us on our government, on our extended government affairs team. Some of them founders and the head of the California Cannabis Industry Association. And that's a quick overview and just wanted to thank you for your time. And we look forward to a great relationship with the city.
Thank you very much. If you want to just remain for one minute.
Sure.
I'll entertain questions for both city staff as well as the applicant, starting with Commissioner Lebig.
Give me one second as I tease out my questions. No questions of the applicant, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vu. Vice Chair Sturm Fels?
I don't have a question for the applicant, but I do have some discussion and questions for city staff after we close the public hearing.
Okay, I've got a question either for staff and/or for the applicant. City staff, could you guys, could you give us a sense of where the perimeter of who was noticed about this particular item in this area? I mean, you know, we have some, but we identified the school, there's some local businesses in the area.
Yeah, all, all property owners within 500 feet were noticed. The school district was noticed because they, they do own that property to the northeast. The field, that's within 500 feet, so they, they were noticed. Yes, all property owners, property owners within 500 feet.
Yeah, and that radius clips a very, a small southwestern corner of that field property, but we, regardless, they still provided the district with a notice.
Thank you very much. So with that, I don't see any additional questions for the applicant. Thank you very much. I'll close the public hearing and we'll continue our discussion.
Thank you.
All right, so I'll go back and I'll actually start with Vice Chair Sturm Fels.
Thank you, Chair Austin. Mr. Laffey, if you wouldn't mind going back to this, this slide with the school site. I appreciate you taking the time to, to pull this up. When I looked at the project location, you know, the first thing I thought was it was in an area of town I was incredibly comfortable with, having, having a site like this. And then kind of as I was looking around, I saw the, the fields and then the school and got a little concerned about the conversations we'd had here previously about state law and 600-foot radius. And, you know, granted, there's like no connectivity via roadway here and, and rail cuts it off on foot. There's certainly path of travel that, that exists. So I'm not sure I'm 100% on, like, on the same page with you that only the property that's owned where the school site is, is the school. Given the property where the fields are is also the schools and the kids are on it and use it. So to me, it's, it's a little uncomfortable. I know existing law allows us at a policy level to, to kind of move, decide that going less than 600 feet is okay. But I think the argument you're making is different, that it's not within 600 feet because the property the school is on is not within 600 feet. So I'm just in a weird, kind of a weird place with this because of the proximity of the school. Not because I have other issues with the location. I think it's all, it's largely completely cut off. But in the rare and unfortunate case where something were to happen and someone were on foot, it is really close. So if Lieutenant Steele wants to weigh in on, on that, or city staff, I'd be happy to hear from either of you on it.
So let me just, you are correct, there is a 600-foot standard set out in the statute. You are also correct that the statute gives local discretion to allow deviations from that. You know, the language in the statute is not crystal clear on whether you measure it from the parcel on which the school itself is located or the parcel or adjacent parcels. I understand your point and I think it's a valid point that if you, that you look at property that is used as part of the school facility. So my suggestion would be you approach this as if the question is whether to allow it to be within less than 600 feet. I would point out, I think David noted, that the 600-foot radius is a very small sliver of the adjacent property. The other points that I would, I would make, although I'm not really, not, it's not my job to argue on behalf of the applicant, but we have conditions as part of the use permit and as part of the development agreement that restrict the property's access. So we do not allow it to be open to the public. We don't allow signage. Access is controlled in a number of ways. This is not a retail establishment, so there will be no public access in and out. There'll be no activity like smoking outside of the facility. So. So, the standards that are set out in the statute are a generic standard for all cannabis activities. I would submit that you could, I think, reasonably conclude that for the kind of activities that we're talking about, it would be appropriate to allow a deviation from that 600-foot standard.
Oh, thank you for the clarification. I agree with you. I think the biggest point that I want to make sure that my fellow commissioners and I are all on the same page with is that, and at least in my view, we are making a policy decision to deviate from that 600-foot standard, because in my view, the definition isn't just the school property site, but the adjacent school fields that is part of the school property. And that's a legal interpretation, and everyone may not agree on this panel, but I think if we're going to make a policy decision on moving forward on this project based on other laws, I want to, and the language around this definition is specific that a local jurisdiction specifies a different radius. And so, I think we, it may be beneficial for us to come to some consensus on whether or not we agree this is within or not within the 600-foot radius, and if it is, that we are all okay on this location, on this specific project, this location, it being less than 600, within less than 600 feet. And city staff may disagree, and I'm totally open to like having a dialogue on this, but I feel like we have to, A, recognize it's a policy choice we're making, and B, make sure we make it clear in either the findings or our motion that we're making that specific choice for this project.
I agree with Commissioner Sternfels on pretty much everything he said. I actually thought this was a great location, so even though there's school there, it's like, but.
Me too.
I'm not sure how you travel by foot from this site over, and I'd also like to note that Jack Rabbit Brewing Company is even closer, that is permitted. To get from the school site to this, to this project site, you have to go way out of your way to come around to it. So, even though as the crow flies, it's close, physically making that connection is a little bit more difficult, so, case by case basis.
Can I weigh in as well? So, I actually agree as well. If I were going to draw the perimeter, I would include the school, the recreational park adjacent to it. I mean, I absolutely would include that. That being said, I am still comfortable with this location, and the large part for me is it comes down to zoning. A child is not going to walk from school to their residence through either the neighborhood adjacent to Jack Rabbit or this proposed facility. The residential areas that feed into the school are not within that area. It's all, it's fully, fully developed and industrial. And so, for that reason, I'm actually comfortable with that interpretation.
We do have the bike trail that we're working on back behind the school, right, that connects from the school south? Is that correct?
Yeah, there is, and that's behind a lot of the existing, you know, industrial uses, you know, that like Norcal beverage and things that have been out there, you know, for decades.
So, and I want to be clear, my, I'm not necessarily alarmed by the location of the site, but there is, there's a policy call we're making, and I think it first comes down to us either agreeing or disagreeing that the adjacent site that the kids use as a playfield that's owned by the school district is part of the school.
I would include it.
And if it is, then, this site is within 600 feet of a school, and we are making a policy call to be okay with that. And I just want to make, I want to make sure we're all on the same page that we're making that call and that it's super crystal clear to the public and others involved, because the school stuff makes me nervous, candidly, and it's in state law because it makes other people nervous. It's very rare when the state says you can only do something within a certain amount because they generally cede that to local government to decide. But in this case, there was, there was a rule put in place, there was also flexibility given. So, I just, I want to proceed thoughtfully.
Given the other restrictions that we're putting on these businesses, I honestly consider them as in going next to residential even. Like, so when we're talking about the air scrubbers, the filters, the fencing, I'm not considering it as if it's in industrial, even though that's where they belong.
Right.
It's because if you had a house nearby, I want it protected to that level. And so, even if it makes it within the radius of the school for this site, I'm still, I'm still comfortable.
Commissioner Vu, do you want to weigh in on this conversation? Okay.
Still your floor, I think, if you have any other comments or...
No, I don't, I don't think I have any other comments. I appreciate everyone indulging in the dialogue. I, to me, it's, you know, a couple things. One, I'm okay with the location. Two, I want to make sure we're all on the same page that we are making a policy choice around the vicinity of a school. And we can, I'm okay with that, and I think the rest of us are, but I think we just got to be really clear about what that decision is.
I agree. I think I'm, if I wasn't clear, I'm in agreement with both of you, as if the playfield should be part of the school, included in that, which puts this within 600 feet, but if it's our discretion, I'm, I'm still comfortable because there is physical barriers, or there are physical barriers. And we have all the other conditions, like fences, fencing, security, air scrubbers, no signage.
No, I agree.
You probably won't know what's there. That is what all those are for.
I agree, I agree. I cede the floor.
Yeah, yes. Well, I will entertain a motion unless there is some additional discussion that we have on this or other points that we haven't entertained.
I just want to mention one more time, I truly do appreciate staff's work on this package and the way you've presented details. There, I'm sure everybody else knows, but each one of these is a big packet, and it made, it made getting through them much easier.
Thank you.
I think the applicant wanted to make her comments.
All right, we'll open the public hearing again.
No, we appreciate your concern on this matter, and it was actually a big concern of ours when we were considering this property. And I think everyone is right with their interpretation, that's the guidance the council we receive in communication with Tamara Colson, Assistant Chief Counsel of the Bureau. And I believe it's California Business Professional Code 2604, 26054B, which allows license, the local license authority to specify a distance other, you know, so you have that ability to go less than 600 feet. And then we did some, a little more research on a number of other situations similar to ours. We brought up a really good point as far as enhanced security, and that will definitely be the case with our facility and our property. But one example nearby is a cannabis operation called A Therapeutic Alternative, which is on H and 30th Street in Sacramento. That is across the street from McKinley Montessori Schools, like literally across the street, and that was a concern, but in actuality, they allowed it, and the school actually feels a lot safer with all the cameras and security around that operation. So I think, similar to some of the comments that were brought up here, with extensive security and the way we'll be operating the business, it would probably add or benefit the neighbors around us. But thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With that, I'll close the public hearing again and entertain further discussion or motion.
Okay, I will move the recommended action with a note that we considered the school buffer to include the fields and interpreted policy, I don't want to say this, interpreted policy such that we are still comfortable with the site location.
Before I entertain a second, do staff want to weigh in at all on what our motion should or shouldn't include?
Well, I think as part of, part of the basis for your motion, you may wish to articulate the reasons why you're comfortable with this facility being closer than that specified distance in state law, which, as Jeff mentioned, does, applies to the whole universe of cannabis businesses, likely thinking of it in a retail sense. So, I think Jeff articulated some of the things about the not open to the public, you know, site is secured, things of that nature, and also then the fact that, you know, even though as the crow flies, it's very close by car or by bike, it's quite a ways, you know, from that school. So, those potentially could be the basis for your supporting this at the less than 600 feet.
Would you include physical barriers or no residential zoning in that area as well or no?
Yes.
Okay, because those are two others that we raised on the commission. So, so, I don't know if you jotted down notes or if we need...
Didn't, but I will try, and I will try and remember all of those, as they were all part of our discussion. I will move the recommended action with the understanding that we included the ball field as part of the school site and still considered the site location as appropriate pertaining to the policy of the three, the 600 feet, because of the current physical barriers between the school site and the project site, the distance around to get to it, the fact that the project site is not within a residential area, that there aren't really residential areas on the other side of the project either that would be walking through, so kids wouldn't be walking through to get to the school past this, because of the fences around the property, the heightened security, and as well as the air quality conditions.
Thank you for that thorough motion, or Commissioner Liebig.
If I could make a suggestion, you may want to ask to have the minutes reflect those comments. She's nodding her head, so I'm assuming the minutes will reflect those comments.
So I have a motion with a request for minutes to reflect the detail of the motion that has been made, and I have a second of that motion by Commissioner Vu. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Sternfels?
Aye.
Commissioner Vu? Commissioner Liebig?
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin? Aye. Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk within 15 days of tonight's action, and the appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much. Move on to informal discussion. What I will ask is if staff have something to report back on the concerns that were raised during, let me refer to my notes, during our last meeting, during matters of the, matters on the, not on the agenda, by Mr. Carrery. If you have any report back today, if not, I'd be interested in hearing at the next commission meeting.
Yeah, we can bring something for the, at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other informal discussion?
I just want to thank Police and Fire for being here tonight, appreciate it.
Great, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.